All right, Mary Beth, we'll be getting started now.
Okay, thank you, Drew. Give me one moment. Recording in progress.
Perfect. Good evening. I am Andrew O'Shea, engineer with Mass Department of Environmental Protection, also known as Mass DEP. And we are here in Barnstable at the Town Hall on December 5th at 6:00 PM for an official public hearing under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A. I am the hearing officer for this hearing. This hearing is being recorded and conducted in a hybrid format, meaning there are people participating both in person and remotely. The recording will be posted on Mass DEP's website. Some Spanish and Cape Verdean translation services will be available from DEP staff and a hired interpreter if needed. Those people will now introduce themselves and ask if any interpretation services will be needed, starting first with Millie Garcia and then Zenilda Cruz.
Buenas noches. Me llamo Millie Garcia Serrano y soy la directora regional de la oficina de la región sureste de Mass DEP. Si hay alguien presente que necesite asistencia interpretativa en español, por favor, levante la mano usando la función de levantar la mano en su pantalla o si está aquí presente, también levante su mano.
And we have no one in person and online? Doesn't appear so. We can check back after, but go ahead, Zenilda.
Aló, sí, buatardí. My name is Zenilda Cruz. I'm the senior interpreter for Cape Verdean. If there's anyone in the list of participants or present that wants to attend the reunion in Cape Verdean, I'll repeat it again. If there's an interpretation for Cape Verdean, if there's anyone who wants to attend the reunion in Cape Verdean, if there's any translations for the levanta mood processialmente or virtualmente, if anyone has interest in attending the reunion in Cape Verdean?
Drew, I have one hand raised. Mr. Otis, do you need translation services? Mr. Hutton? Oh? Richard Otis, can you unmute?
I did. I don't need services. I just put my hand up because I wanted to speak.
Okay, we'll let you know when to do that. Can you please put your hand down for now? Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands have been raised online.
Thanks, Mary Beth. All right, so we'll proceed accordingly. The purpose of this hearing is to accept public comments on Mass DEP's draft proposed amendments to the Title V regulations at 310 CMR 15 to establish natural resource nitrogen-sensitive areas and new watershed permitting regulations at 314 CMR 21. Before we begin the hearing, here is the protocol by which this hearing will be run. For in-person participants, if you wish to provide public comment, please sign up on the comment sign-in sheet with your name and, if applicable, your affiliation. We will give elected and appointed officials an opportunity to comment first. After that, we will call upon people in order they sign up to come to the podium and provide comments. After that, we will call on remote participants to provide comments. For remote participants, to minimize background noise and interference, the host has muted all remote participants and turned off the chat function. If you desire to comment remotely, please indicate that by raising your virtual hand. You will be unmuted in the order you raised your hands and then asked to state your name and affiliation, if you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, and provide your comments. If you are using a cellphone, you can use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to toggle mute or unmute. Commenters will be limited to three minutes. When you are prompted to provide comment, please come to the podium if you are in person and speak clearly and distinctly, and remember your comment period will be limited to three minutes. If time allows, you may be able to continue with your comments at the end of the hearing. If you have a comment that was previously made by someone else, instead of repeating the comment, you may state the subject matter, the speaker, and the perspective with which you agree. If your comments exceed three minutes and you desire additional time, you may be allowed to provide additional or remaining comments after other commenters have had a chance to speak, if time allows. Mass DEP will not be responding to your comments because this is a public hearing. We are only here to listen and record the comments. Mass DEP encourages you to also submit comments by email to dep-talks@mass.gov. Please include Title V and watershed permit in the subject line. The public comment period closes at 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2022. For additional information, you may go to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection website. And on the homepage, there's a large button for public comments that says "Meeting and Comments." You can click that and it will take you to the links to see additional information. Or you can search mass.gov-310cmr15. And for those that are in person, if you can kindly please mute your cellphones so they don't ring while those are speaking at the podium. All right, so, yes, so we'll be starting with elected and appointed officials, specifically our host for the evening, Mark Els, to provide the first comments, and then afterwards, we will signal those who are officials to follow him.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to Town Hall in Barnstable. Oh, did my time start already? Oh, okay. Should I jump right into my comments then? I was just going to remind everybody that elevator is on the, on this side, my right. Bathrooms are over there for anybody who needs to utilize the facilities. And thank you all for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Into my comments. "We recognize the need to protect our water resources and ask that the adoption of any proposed changes complement and advance the efforts of the communities, specifically those with approved CWMPs, by recognizing those approved CWMPs. We request that Mass DEP take the time needed to review all comments submitted and develop revised regulations that advance the protection of our water resources in a manner that recognizes the practical challenge of successfully implementing such a significant change." A few of our major areas that I just want to touch on. Communities with an approved CWMP. The OCWMP should be considered watershed management plans, and a town should be granted a watershed permit if it contains the following elements: approval from the town's legislative body, it's undergone a consistency review and approval process by the Cape Cod Commission, it's been approved by DEP, and it's undergone a MIPA review process and has been granted a certificate of approval by the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Additional information, if required, can be accepted as an addendum to the CWMP, and this should be done as seamless as possible to prevent further delays in the implementation of our community's comprehensive wastewater management plan. When we begin to look at the watershed management plans and watershed designated sensitive areas, co-permittees should not be liable for the activities of other communities within those watersheds. If a town chooses not to appropriate funds to address their share of the problem, there's little that an adjoining town will be able to do to force the matter. Barnstable's not interested in pursuing legal action against a neighboring town to force them to comply with a watershed permit. That role should remain the sole jurisdiction of DEP. A town or local government unit should only be responsible for its share of the pollutant load, regardless of whether it's under a joint permit. Other questions are: How are we going to look at new regulations to address additional pollutants such as phosphorus and emerging contaminants? If this moves toward an individual onsite solution focused solely on nitrogen removal? Another area, implementation schedule for the onsite alternative system is problematic from a purely constructability standpoint. Thus, we would support a more phased approach over a longer period of time. The proposed regulation calls for a 75% reduction in pollutant levels to be achieved within 20 years. The proposal language could be clearer to avoid any misunderstanding or misinterpretation by adding language that states 75% reduction in pollutant levels to be achieved within 20 years and the community meet its goals of their approved CWMP relative to TMDL reduction. Sorry for the acronyms, everybody. I got to move to next? Sorry. Thank you. Barnstable plans to submit written comments by December 16th. So, thank you all.
Sorry about that. If there are other elected or appointed officials here who wish to provide comments, please raise your hand now. All right, so we'll go here. Eric?
Thank you. My name's Eric Turkington. I'm a retired attorney in Falmouth. Falmouth is a town with 14 estuaries. We've got 40% of all the estuaries on Cape Cod are in Falmouth. I spent 20 years in the legislature, and for the last 10 years, I've been the chairman of the Water Quality Committee in the town of Falmouth. I was around for Title V in 1995. That was very controversial, as is this, but it provided an advance in public health. It was rolled out gradually, and it was affordable to the homeowner at the time of sale. This proposed Title V amendment is none of these. This proposed amendment is a travesty. In Falmouth alone, 15,000 homeowners would be affected immediately. They would all be required to install an IA of $30,000 apiece or more. That's $457 million. They would be required, as I say, to install it within five years, and they would be required to install IA systems that don't work. You know they don't work, and we know they don't work. So, I'm giving you a quote now from somebody who I greatly respect, but I won't embarrass him. But this is what he said when this was first proposed. "This would raise the cost to the individual homeowner for no particular environmental benefit." I couldn't say it better. DEP's worst nightmare is if these regulations actually went into effect anywhere, but they were never intended to. The intent, quite clearly, was to force the towns to agree to enter into watershed agreements. Another quote from my famous environmental friend, "to put their heads in the news." "It is just wrong to enact a regulation that you know is politically unacceptable, financially impossible, and will not achieve its objectives. It is just wrong to enact a regulation as a cynical subterfuge to get around Proposition 2 and 1/2, the law against unfunded mandates. It is just wrong to enact a regulation as a club to force the towns to agree to something completely different. And it is just wrong to enact a regulation as a concession to a conservation law foundation lawsuit." This language of this regulation was practically lifted from the Conservation Law Foundation lawsuit against the towns of Mass DEP and Barnstable. Their argument that they've been making for 13 years is that every septic system in Cape Cod is a point source of pollution. It has to be regulated that way. They've lost that argument three times in federal court. They lost it in 2013. They lost it the second time around. They lost it a year ago when the town of Barnstable, they tried to sue Barnstable, and Barnstable lost. This is just wrong. It's an abuse of the regulatory process, and DEP should be embarrassed.
Thank you. I saw another hand for an elected official. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Robert Rittenhour. I'm the town administrator in the town of Yarmouth. I'll try to be brief here. I mean, the first thing that needs to be said is the local governments out here on Cape Cod tremendously support the DEP's efforts to assist us with the removal of nitrogen in these sensitive coastal embayments. In fact, we're your regional partners in this effort. And I know in my community particularly, we've spent a lot of money. We worked very hard at forging that partnership. In fact, we have a comprehensive wastewater management plan that has taken multiple years and different iterations that we've worked in partnership with the DEP to make sure that we have in place to provide the specific roadmap for the removal of nitrogen in coastal embayments. These regulations, we feel, are a hard left turn in the wrong direction because they leave our entire comprehensive planning process completely in the lurch. And one of the largest problems, we have three major estuaries, watersheds in Yarmouth. And in our plan, which we hope to get Phase 1 approved at this Spring Town Meeting, it's well over $200 million just to fund that one piece with the three watersheds. It is physically, financially, and logistically impossible for us to meet that standard of having 75% of all of the nitrogen removed within a 20-year period. And the DEP has already approved our plan to do it in a longer period. It's going to take us at least 30 to 40 years and close to $1 billion to do this. And by vilifying the local communities by placing regulations as obstacles in front of us that make us so that we're in violation of those on day one, first of all, it's not a partnership, and it's simply unfair. And the other key point that I want to make is that when this originally was proposed, there was an admission that numbers that we're talking about as regional partners, individual communities should not be paying 100% of this cost. There was $200 million that the governor had proposed. Now, these funds have been completely withdrawn, yet the regulations still remain, and we're going to have to pay over $200 million for Phase 1 alone. And I just would say that the regulations need to be delayed until we address some of the critical points. First of all, the technology that you propose. We all know you don't want to see it. It's not as efficacious as the technology that we already have approved with your agency.
Closing remark.
I think that sums up my comments, but please, take a look at the financing of this. I think if DEP, you know, was a little stronger on assisting us with the funding of it, I think it would be the best thing to make things go quicker. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials present? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Bob Hinckley. I am an elected member of the Select Board for the town of Akushnet and also an elected member of the Soil Board for the town of Akushnet. My comments are mostly in regards to the lack of communication with the DEP to my community. On October 25th, the DEP zoomed into one of our Select Board meetings, stating NICA maps will be drawn up, which I appreciate. I'm all for protecting the environment. They also promised that they were going to let us know when these public hearings were happening. A good 90% of my community had no idea these meetings were happening until after the December 1st remote meeting happened. I just drove an hour here to make sure I made it to this meeting to let you know that while Akushnet is still listed as acceptable levels of nitrogen, to be on that map with not allowing my community that I represent to actually voice their concerns at a public meeting in our town where they don't have to drive an hour. I can drive an hour. I don't mind. A lot of the people in my town are elderly. They don't have Facebook. They don't have social media. They're not very internet savvy. They rely on people like myself to communicate with them. My town administrator wasn't aware of either of the two meetings you've already had. Neither was my board of health. 80% of my town is covered by septic. The neighboring community has combined sewer overflows that put more nitrogen into Buzzards Bay than any of our septic systems combined. My biggest concern with rushing this through for January 3rd is not everybody's going to know what this is going to do and how it's going to affect their community. Akushnet's a very small town, 10,000 people. It's a farm community. We don't have resources. Our commercial business is very small. 88% of our town is residential taxpayers. A lot of these people are elderly, fixed-income people that cannot afford to do what this projected plan would do. I'm not saying the plan is entirely wrong. What I'm saying is that the January 3rd rollout is absolutely unacceptable, and it's not fair for the communities of South Coast, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Any other elected officials present? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Christopher Micho, town of Dartmouth, Director of Public Health. So, this is the third public hearing that I attend, and there's two commonalities that I keep hearing, and they are: Everyone supports a better environment. It's just how this is rolling out. And I think all of our frustrations here shouldn't be with each other. It should be with the department that brought us to where we are tonight. There is a section in Mass General Laws that requires Mass DEP to be protective of the environment. Somewhere in the 21s, I believe, Section 2, Paragraph 10. I think it might be 21A. To be protective. These regulations are reactive. And not only are they reactive to the Conservation Lawsuit Foundation lawsuit, they're reactive. We're going to put these regulations in place, and all of a sudden, if we find out one of our estuaries later impairs, then we'll respond. They don't have a component to them that is protective of the environment. We have other components to Title V that are protective of public health, like setbacks to a well, for example, but we don't have that minimum protective standard. We have an arbitrary definition in these proposed regulations because it doesn't have a metric assigned to it. So, you know, let's not get angry at each other and forget about most of the people that are going to be impacted. I know the Cape and southeastern Mass are very different, but out our way, you know, we're not going to be looking at searing. It's going to largely be borne on the backs of people that have septic systems or a comprehensive watershed permit that's going to require buy-in from the executive board and funding through the legislative body, which I'm not sure I can convince because I have to express the uncertainty of this because there's a lot of unknowns that we've discovered about this whole strategy of 20-year management. So, one of the things that really kind of irks me is I keep hearing again and again, "Don't listen to the chatter. Don't listen to the noise in this." I have to think about the elders. I have to think about the people of median income. Those are the people that are backs are being broken by inflation. They're worrying about heating their homes, and they can't afford any more debt with betterments. Moreover, we have environmental justice areas that are being underserved by Mass DEP through composting, deregulation. We also have, as the gentleman from Akushnet mentioned, a CSO that discharges along five of our beaches that discharged 31 million gallons since the beginning of the fiscal year. It discharged 920,000 gallons at our last public meeting in Lakeville. So, if we're really serious about managing nitrogen in our estuaries, we can do more. The town of Dartmouth, you know, I heard from one of the sponsors of this regulation that, you know, the towns have been dilatory. Dartmouth has been not. We were the first with stormwater regulations. We were the first to limit impervious area within the watershed. We are the, we were very aggressive with searing and land preservation, so we were not dilatory. Thank you.
Other elected officials present? All right, I'm not seeing any, so we'll switch over to online. Mary Beth, are there any hands raised for elected officials?
At this point, let me ask for those of you who are online. If you are an elected or appointed official, please raise your hand. Otherwise, please put your hand down until you are notified to raise hands for further comments. So, elected or appointed officials only, please. Okay, so first we have Bruce Gordon. And when your name is called, you're going to see a request to become a panelist. Please answer yes, and then you can unmute and begin. And after Bruce will be Anne Fleck Henderson.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, great. I'd like to say two things. One is, overall, I'm in favor of the direction of this proposal in terms of septic systems. I've looked into a number of alternative systems here ourselves for our house because I'm, I think all of us on the Cape want to see the water quality in our estuaries as well as in our ponds improved or at least stop the degradation as soon as possible. That said, my concern about this program, from what I've heard tonight and a little bit about what I've seen before, is that it's got a 20-year window, and there's really no, as has been expressed, no way for DEP to make allowance or the towns to make allowance to facilitate the homeowners who have difficulty funding this. We've been through that in some other things around our local pond. And so, I guess my bottom line is, is that I don't know the technicalities about whether the karadai systems would meet the specifications, however they're defined. I believe the goal is correct, but I believe the imposing such a thing without setting up funding that is sort of analogous to the way the town funds septic improvements, partially betterment, and partially tax-funded is the only thing that makes sense if you want to get this thing done in a hurry and get it done right. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next will be Anne Fleck Henderson. And again, for elected and appointed officials, if you do wish to speak, please put your hand up. Elected and appointed officials only. So, Anne, you should get a message to be a panelist. After Anne, we will have Michael Boucher. Anne, when you're ready, you can unmute.
Let me say first that I didn't raise my hand, and I'm not an elected official, so if you want to rule me out of order right now, you have my permission.
Okay, we will do that, and we will, when you hear us do the call for hands, please raise it again. Thank you very much. Okay. Going to Michael Boucher. And when you start, if you can just state your name and affiliation, if applicable. Next will be Paula Schnep. Let's go. Michael, if you can say yes to the panelist's request? Okay, do you not know what happened with Michael? I apologize. Hopefully, he can come back on. Paula Schnep, going to promote you to panelist, please answer yes. And you can unmute when you're ready, Paula.
Thank you. Paula Schnep, I'm an elected town counselor with the Town of Barnstable. And while I am generally in favor of the regulations as presented, I do have a couple of concerns. And the first, has already been expressed tonight, is the financing of this massive undertaking to clean up our watersheds and our coastal abeyments. Again, a notable project, but very, very expensive. In the Town of Barnstable, we're looking at an over billion-dollar project and have identified a lot of resources to be able to move forward on that, but we are also, I think, relying on some additional resources from both federal and state government. And it looks like we're not getting sort of that cost sharing that we were hoping for, either through ARPA, or BIL, or from other state resources. So, as this goes forward, if it does, as written, I would definitely encourage other resources being identified. And again, very disappointed that the 200 million is apparently off the table for now. The other concern I wanted to express has more to do with the implementation for towns that share watersheds. Although we've entered into intermunicipal agreements with other towns, it's a little unclear in the way the regulations are written how joint permits would go forward. Would we be an individual actor in those joint watersheds? And if one of our partnering towns fails to move forward in getting their permits done, how would that impact our community in terms of would the homeowners or residents that are in that watershed permitting area be liable for putting in IAs if neighboring towns do not comply with getting their watershed permits? Again, maybe that's, it's clearer in the regulations than I can see, but I'm most concerned about the performance of other communities, even though we're, you know, in this together. So, those are my main issues. Again, I look forward to hearing a number of the comments that are being presented by other members of the communities around us. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is Darrell Beardsley. So, again, doing elected officials, appointed officials speaking at this point. So, Darrell Beardsley. Darrell, can unmute when you're ready?
Okay, so as an elected member of a Board of Health, I'd say that our main focus is always in our town that has private septic and private well on nearly every property in town. Water quality is first and foremost, and what we're interested in. So unfortunately, I really only learned about this issue today, and haven't, I will work on preparing something a bit more eloquent and concise and insightful for you later, but what struck me about this is that the reliance on a sequence of technologies to install to address nitrogen doesn't look at some of the underlying problems of how septic systems are managed by homeowners in general, because you can have some sort of denitrifying system, but if chemicals go into that system, that could destroy, for example, the denitrifying bacteria, then your system isn't going to really be performing as expected. So, I think I'd like to see for us is some sort of assistance coming out on how, and help with educating homeowners about do's and don'ts. We know the basics, but I think it'd be helpful to have more information coming from the state level to address that, and let's see how we do, if we can improve the performance of the existing systems by better behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Their hands raised for elected or appointed officials online. So, back to you, Drew.
Okay, thank you, Mary Beth. Lost you there for a second. All right, so we will begin receiving comments from the remaining of our in-person attendees, and then we'll switch back over to the remote. And so, starting with Andrew, you didn't provide us a last name. So, Andrew, if you can come up to the podium, provide us your affiliation.
Drew, can you hear me?
Yes, offset, Mary Beth can hear you again.
My name is Andrew, and my affiliation is I am an American, born and raised here, and I'm a taxpayer. And you people do not represent us. You can claim to be experts, you can claim to be elected officials, whatever the hell you want, I really don't care. You do not represent us. Nothing about this, anything anyone's going to say here to the contrary of what you've already decided is going to matter. I'm reminded of the words of Mark Twain, who said to the effect of, "If we, if what we voted mattered, you wouldn't allow us to do it. If anything we had to say here tonight mattered against what you've already decided to do, you wouldn't allow us to come up here and say anything." And I'm also reminded of the words of a wise man, Ronald Reagan, who once said the nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." And I see it prove, prove true here. I cannot afford to fix my house. I cannot afford to do any of the things I need to do already. We have to worry about inflation and paying our electric bills because of experts and decisions that have been made in our interest, which we had no say in, and now you want to push more of it on us. I for one have no intention of conforming to these regulations, decisions, mandates, whatever you want to call them, any more than I had any intention, nor did I conform to any mask mandates, any vaccination mandates, or any of your other BS. You're supposed to work for us, answerable to us, and you make your living off of our tax dollars, which we have to go out and earn every day. Nobody who came up with any of these plans asked any homeowner what they thought before they came up with these plans, nor do they have to live with the consequences of it. We do. But tax money is free, so it doesn't matter. I have a proposal on how to fund this. Anybody who wants it can opt in. Anybody who doesn't can opt out. And the funding mechanism for it will come from every expert, every elected official, every smart person sitting in a room somewhere coming up with great ideas that other people have to bear the consequences of. It can come out of your salary, and it will continue to come out of your salary until every single citizen in Cape Cod, in Massachusetts, has their systems squared away. Then you can get your salary back. Because if you think it's such a good idea, you can pay for it. Because come hell or high water, you can arrest me now if you want, because I will not comply.
Thank you, Andrew.
No, no, thank you.
We the people, not we the government.
Mary Beth, I can hear you online. Can you hear us? Okay. But I can continue. My apologies, we're having some technical difficulties, and we have to wait for the recording to start. And so, we'll take the quick break while we figure out how to get the recording back to start. Sorry about that.
It is important for us to capture your comments, so we can ensure that they are part of the official record, so we appreciate your, your understanding. I'm getting messages they're still working on it in Barnstable, so thank you for your patience.
Mary Beth, just as a test, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Drew.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Drew, are they still being worked on?
Yes, they're still working on it.
Recording in progress. Still working on it, folks. Thank you for your patience. We're almost there.
Testing, Mary Beth, can you hear me? Oh, I think I was muted. I'll try again. Testing, Mary Beth, can you hear me?
Yes, Drew, I can hear you.
Perfect. So, I'll just wait for the thumbs up from Sarah before I commence. All right, so we'll continue the public hearing, resuming at 6:47 PM here in the Town of Barnstable. And we'll resume with the in-person comments. And so, we have Brian, I apologize if I pronounce your name incorrectly, Brian Brockton Smith. And on deck, we'll have Keith Barber from the Pecasset Water Quality Coalition.
Hello, Drew. Brian Bragginton Smith. I was born right over here at the Cape Cod Hospital about 70 years ago. And this topic that we're talking about right now is something that we should have dealt with 50 years ago. It's something that is not a discretionary option. It's something that has to be done. It's not unlike climate change. We're reaching tipping points where we have no choice. What we have to do is the best that we can do, in the best way that we can do it. And I understand what the folks around here are upset about. Money. Costs a lot of money. If we'd done it 50 years ago, it wouldn't have been as much, but that didn't happen. So, now we're in this reality. And several folks talked about something, mentioned something that, that to me is really a problem, and that's Fair Haven, that CSO. That's a real nightmare. I know it's there, and it's been doing, going for 30 years, that I know of. These are the things that we need to deal with. And I lodge you in what you're trying to do. I, I, I feel sorry for you being in the position that you're in, because we don't have any choice, but what are the options that we have before us? We have to deal with the nutrients, we have to deal with the micro constituents, and we have to deal with the other contaminants of emerging concern. If we don't deal with it initially, we're going to have to deal with it later. And those things are going to have to be dealt with. So, I guess what I'm saying is that we need to be taking this watershed approach. We need to be dealing with the watershed as a cohesive element. We need to be dealing with the watershed as a cohesive element. And we need to do the best we can, which means going beyond septic systems. I hate to, to, to be the harbinger of bad news, but the simple fact is that we don't have a choice. And in those embayments that are particularly threatened, Lewis Bay is one of them. I grew up on Lewis Bay. I formed the Lewis Bay Research Center because nothing was being done. And, and that bay is in trouble, as all of our bays are. And ultimately, if we really look at it, our aquifer is in trouble. So all of this needs to be done. It needs to be done effectively. It needs to be done decisively. And it has to be done now. So, you know, I understand about the money. But the bottom line is that this is something that should have been provided by our government decades ago. And that's kind of the bottom line. I hear some of the folks talking about it and saying, well, you know, we didn't, we, you know, we need the money now. Well, the money was there 30 years ago. And nobody wanted to do it. And to be honest with you, in many instances, the septic systems have been used as a growth control mechanism. And if you really look at it, down here on the Cape, we've got multiple crises. And housing, housing and the environment are them. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Barber from the Pecasset Water Quality Coalition, followed by Bob Doyer.
So Keith Barber, Pecasset Water Quality Coalition. So I'm probably a little naive because I'm really kind of startled by all the negatives about this. You know, like the previous gentleman said, we, we don't have a choice in doing this. It, it needs to be done now. We need to be able to find the money. We need to be able to find the people to do the work, the materials to make the systems. We need to find the people in town government to execute the mandate. And we need to find cooperation. So there have been some criticisms of the data. The EPA says 80% of excess nitrogen on Cape Cod stems from traditional septic systems. 80%. So we're starting with this, this, these new regulations are starting with homeowners, which is where the septic systems are. The soil on Cape Cod moves the water along faster than many other places because it's sandy soil, it's gravelly soil. And this is why the septic systems have to be updated. You know, these, where we're at right now is caused by inaction. So if we delay these regulations anymore, it's just more inaction. We need action. We need this to start as fast as possible. You know, if we are forced to enact these resolutions, these regulations, we will be forced to figure out how to do it. We can find the money, we can find the people. But we can't do it if we put it off. It needs to be done. You know, the cost of enacting this is very steep. But the cost of not enacting it isn't steep at all. It's disastrous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob will be followed by Scott Horsley.
Good evening. For the record, Robert Dwyer from the Pecasset Water Quality Coalition. I'm going to amplify on some comments that I made at the December 1 hearing. My written comments are going to cover 11 separate points. So there'll be amplification on what I said then and now. Just to amplify again, this law has been on the books for 35 years. This has been a requirement in the Clean Water Act amendments of 1987 since requiring EPA and the states to implement these TMDLs and take action to correct any exceedances, any impairments of water bodies. The department has been woefully neglectful of doing this. Now, having said that, in principle, these are an excellent way to approach this problem. In practice, there are a number of problems as have been talked about already. The three big elephants in the room are cost, implementation, and support for the towns. I'll get to go through each of them very quickly here. The cost is something that ought to be solved with the best minds that we have. Put a multi, a blue ribbon panel together, a multi-stakeholder panel to look at options that have been successful in other places. In Rhode Island, 20 years ago, there was a big fish kill statewide. There was a consensus to get this fixed. By 19, by 2018, they had reduced nitrogen inflow to Narragansett Bay by 55%. It'd be more, except that the Blackstone River and the Taunton River, which come from the state of Massachusetts, had no reductions in nitrogen going into Narragansett Bay. In Tampa Bay, the implementation there has decreased, has increased eelgrass in the, in the, in the bay by something like 500% in 20 years. I wrote a letter to Senator Moran saying that she should put a panel together for implementation, finding out the best ways to actually get this done so it is constructible. And also for cost put, to identify the best ways that this could be funded, not just put the burdens on the individual homeowners. And also a way to get support for the towns. All of those have to be done before this can ever work. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Horsley. And he will be followed by Dan Turner from the town of Dartmouth.
Good evening, thank you. I want to start by saying I've been working on this issue on Cape Cod for 35 years. And I have seen some progress. But I've seen a lot of opportunities missed. And I've also heard many, many excuses as to why we should postpone. It's too expensive, not now, not me. And that hasn't worked. So I agree with the previous speaker. That's kind of why we're in this predicament we're in. I want to commend Mass DEP for doing something really difficult, proposing these regulations. Not easy, but as the previous speaker said, it's needed. There's no doubt about it. The science is done. I'm not sure anybody here is willing to stand up and say, we don't have a problem. I think it's pretty clear that we do. So the only question is, when do we fix it and how? And when should have been 20 years ago? We had an opportunity to start on it. And again, people got up here and said, we can't afford it. Let's wait, let's do more thinking about this. And I think the time has come. So I do, I do commend DEP for moving forward. I also want to say that these, we do have a new generation of innovative alternative septics that in fact do work. There's a lot of interesting miss and disinformation out there about that, which is really sad. There's plenty of data on it. The idea of putting new Title V systems into these watersheds that are already impaired is, is almost insane, I would say. We have technologies that work, they're affordable. And I think these regulations will really help get us there. And I guess I would just say, the only comment I have, and I will put this in writing, is the five-year plan is clearly aggressive. I understand why you're doing it. Perhaps there are ways to focus that on near-shore, near-shore systems first to get a quicker impact or beneficial impact. There's possibility of tying it to things like real estate transfers where people are already spending money to get an upgrade. So maybe there's some ways to tweak the implementation. But I think overall, it makes a lot of sense. And again, it's not, this is not perfect. But it's very good. And I commend you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner will be followed by Christopher Fay from Dartmouth.
Hello, my name is Dan Turner. And for the record, for the past 40 years, I've specialized in wastewater treatment systems, engineering, sizing, and designing systems. Variety of biological treatment plants. Matter of fact, somebody mentioned the fish kill in Rhode Island. I was also involved in development of the IFAS or Integrated Fix Homem activated sludge plant for Fields Point. And that is a 100 MGD facility for total nitrogen removal. I was also involved with Total, Town of Groton, which is also total nitrogen removal process using, again, an IFAS process, Integrated Fix Homem activated sludge. I'm currently working right now with a large landfill down in Pennsylvania for total nitrogen removal using a moving bed biofilm reactor process. I come around to essentially the Chesapeake Bay Initiative. Dr. Clifford Randall had essentially a layout of all of the TMDL loadings throughout the year. And then he laid up another of the precipitation. And the precipitation exactly matched that of the TMDL loadings. I'm not sure what kind of studies have been done to date on TMDLs and how they're actually being generated in Cape Cod and also around the South Coast area. When you look at the overall implementation program, the implementation program of, say, best available technologies, that needs to be defined. Because best available technologies could be some of these four-stage Bard &amp; Faux process, modified Ludwig ettinger process. It could even be electro-oxidation followed by ceramic membrane. All of the systems should be monitored in some way because these systems will not be managed and monitored. They can be just put in. I've seen some with rocks and some wood chips. These systems, it's a fallacy, okay? If you really want to do it right, you have to have some level of monitoring as well. My suggestion, when you look at this, and I'm not denying that there's an issue, there is an issue. It's how you implement. And you have to go after the big fish first. You have to go after CSOs. That's where the bulk of the nitrogen comes from. Same thing with agriculture. You've got to look at agriculture and preventing runoff taking place from agriculture. Compost applications. They need to either haul their water or they need to treat it on-site. No more of this just allowing it to go for a discharge. This continues on with like, again, farms. They really need to be looked at as far as within the watershed area, how that's implemented. Are the farms to be run by farmers or should they be run by the state? This is a question that needs to be looked at. I'm saying slow down the overall process because when you put it on--
Closing remarks, sir?
When you put it on the homeowner, these systems can be very expensive. And I would approach the coastal, on-the-coast septic systems first. And then work your way back after a significant testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Fay. And he will be followed by John-- Cayman?
Camus.
Camus? Sorry, mispronounced your name. Go ahead.
I'm from the town of Dartmouth. We have about 2,000 septic systems that could be impacted by these regulations. The septic is only accounting for 29% of the nitrogen in the equation here. Dartmouth and other affected Massachusetts communities on the South Coast were not given a seat at the table throughout this process. And there's an obvious lack of transparency and stakeholder engagement on the local level. We simply need more time as a community to raise awareness of this critical issue. And at a minimum, I'm calling on the Mass DEP to pause this process for several months, keep the public comment period open so that the citizens can be engaged in a timely manner. We need more common sense solutions that don't impose significant government mandated debt on the taxpayers. And a regulatory agency should not have the power to impose this significant debt like what's at stake here. There should be a legislative component to this process so our elected leaders can engage on behalf of their constituents. The timing of these critical public hearings is very suspect. They're being held at a time of year when people are focused on the holidays, one week after Thanksgiving. All these hearings for public comment are happening over the course of six days. This issue's received very little press in the region, except for a few major news outlets that are starting to pick it up over the last several days. The proposed changes are not new news to Cape Cod residents. This has been talked about for a long time. However, it's definitely news to my community in Dartmouth, Westport, Kuschnet, other South Coast communities. We do not have a well-informed population of residents regarding the proposed changes in which with such widespread financial implications at stake, the DEP could have done a lot better job on a public relations campaign to raise awareness, such as mailers, in addition to additional hearings spread out of time. These changes are being proposed at a time when we have a once-in-a-generation inflation issue that's impacting residents across all income levels, including a sharp rise in energy prices. And a lot of these systems would have to be mechanical and use energy to power them. To add more to that burden that citizens are facing at this time is unacceptable. This is a critical issue that puts the crosshairs squarely on the individual homeowners, many of which already have Title V compliant septic systems. Perhaps the focus should be on the homes in the immediate vicinity of the impacted waterways, a tiered approach, as some others have suggested tonight and at other comments. Perform mitigation and retest the water quality to see the effectiveness of these systems. And I say that because one example in mind is Town of Westport, an adjacent community to Dartmouth, has been proactive in currently deploying IA systems. However, some of those systems may be found to not meet the criteria that's going to be coming forth in this forthcoming regulation if it goes through. These new standards are very ambiguous and they call for, quote unquote, "best available technology." It doesn't define performance characteristics. And you need to have measurable performance criteria to back into a solution. It's clear from DEP technology that the use of the IA systems alone, and I'm quoting, "With current technology, it appears the use of IA systems would not meet the required end reductions." That statement alone should floor anyone with--
Closing remarks, sir?
Required to install an IA system. And I have a hard time believing that a regulatory agency would make ambiguous comments like that, ambiguous requirements like this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Camus, Cayman? All right, we'll go with Tom Burgess from Catuitt, Mass.
Good evening, I'm Tom Burgess from 658 Main Street, Catuitt, Massachusetts. I've lived in Catuitt all of my life. I am very sympathetic with the people who've spoken about the great expense of this project. However, I have to confess that I am one of the co-playatives of the CLF suit against the Town of Barnstable and the Town of Ashby. Because I believe that the time is now to face the problems that are faced, that are facing Cape Cod. And this problem, which is only the nitrogen and doesn't deal with the phosphorus, it doesn't deal with, with sea rise, it doesn't deal with other characteristics that are threatening our landscape here on the Cape, is already super, super expensive. But it appears to me that if people buckle down and look at things that are happening and act on them now, even though this is a terrible time financially, that probably in the end, 20, 30, potentially 60 years from now, there will still be a Cape Cod which people can enjoy, as I did when I was a young man and younger than I am today. I do think that the money can be found. I look at the paper every day and I see millions and billions of dollars going to save people who need to be saved. We need to be saved and we can find the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ryan Castle from the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors. Ryan will be followed by Curtis Sears.
Thank you. Ryan Castle, CEO of the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors. One, I want to thank DEP for several outreach meetings with our staff to learn more and to understand and to ask questions and be responsive. So we really appreciate it because we've had a lot of questions for this matter. We'll present more formal comments in letter before the deadline. Wanted to, tonight, just kind of talk overview of the idea. We've heard several times DEP talk about they're going through this process because Title V is where they have regulatory authority. We actually would think that you might want to look broader than that, right? We support the concept of the watershed permit, whether the details of what the watershed permit has to incur. Some of the towns have, have suggestions on making it better. But I would say, look at doing the watershed permit legislatively or however you need to, rather than going through and amending Title V. Because when you amend the Title V, you're putting that huge burden on homeowners. And we're looking at this through the lens of housing affordability, which I think everyone should be, you know, homeowners that need to be able to afford to stay to live in their house or purchase a house in the future. And that lens of housing affordability, which is at a crucial point on Cape Cod and all over Massachusetts. So as you think about that, think about it through that lens a little bit. And I think you've heard a lot about that-- And I think you've heard a lot about that tonight, especially on the Cape where you see a lot of the affected homeowners on the south side of the Cape being in the housing where our housing is most attainable. If you look at the housing market, a lot of these areas are where you have the lower median house price that we could get homeowners, people into. And if you increase that housing cost and the burden you're going to place on that. So I would encourage you to look through that lens. As you do that, you know, we've been very active in trying to support clean water campaigns and cleaning up the waterways on the Cape. And that's why we'd support the watershed permit idea and really thinking about looking at it from that legislative side of saying, okay, let's make this, instead of a voluntary permit program, why not make it mandatory and not have this burden on homeowners? Because overall, Title V, you know, when you're going through this, what you're doing is you're trying to say, okay, we're going to save on nitrogen pollution. But nitrogen pollution has a higher community-wide benefit. But you're putting the sole burden of funding that community-wide benefit on an individual homeowner who sees no actual benefit. The benefit goes to the whole community. It doesn't make their, how their septic system work any better, more efficiently for the use of that house. And so I would encourage you to not look at Title V, but to look at other mechanisms to get that watershed permit. Thank you very much.
Curtis Sears.
I'll pass.
Next, we'll have Mark, Mark from Harwich.
Mark M. Egman?
All right, moving along, Kevin Johnson from Yarmouth. Kevin Johnson from Yarmouth? How about Kathy--
Fox Alfaro. Hi, I'm actually Kathy Fox Alfano. Maybe I don't write very well. Anyway, I do agree that these regulations are needed. He's talking about costs. What is the cost of closed beaches? If you don't believe me, ask the Gulf Coast of Florida. Their economy sinks like a rock if they can't, if they don't have tourism because they have red tide caused by algae, caused by pollution, same problem that we have. But I do agree that we have to have, well, first of all, low-interest loans that were talked about are not enough. We must have significant investment by the state and federal government. We cannot have unfunded mandates, which is what we're talking about right now. These watershed permits must be a simple process, not a very difficult one. We need inter-municipal joint permits because we all share the water. And we don't have enough companies right now to do these IA-enhanced systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Tom Klein.
Thank you very much. I applaud Mass DEPs wading into the swamp, literally as figuratively. I know you guys tried to avoid it for many years. And I guess we can thank Conservation Law Foundation for making that impossible to do anymore. I've been in Barnstable for over 50 years, first as a summer resident and then subsequently as a homeowner and primary resident here. And my family, many of my family spent many years and many summers here as well. During the time I've been here, I've seen the water quality around us go from being clear with eelgrass in it and where you could fish in all the bays and see the bottom to the point where we are now where the water looks like coffee with milk in it. The bottom is so foul that if you walk into the water, you're going to be in something undefinable up to at least your knees. I don't swim anymore unless I fall overboard. And my family members, who for many years have come down here with their children and as summer renters and really are kind of typical of what has driven much of the economy of the Cape over the years, of tourism bringing in outside dollars in there. Last year decided that they would no longer come down. They said frankly, the beaches stink, you can't go swimming here, and you can smell a foul smell already quite a distance from the beach. It's no longer fun. Why would we come anymore? We'll find someplace else. Scott Horsley said, you know, correctly, this is something we should have addressed 20 years ago. It kind of reminds me of the story of trees. When's the best time to plant a tree 20 years ago? When's the second-best time to plant a tree is today? You know, the arguments we've heard against going forward on this, whether it be, how are we going to afford it? How are we going to implement it? Et cetera, et cetera. All end up coming to the same conclusion, which is, we shouldn't do this now. And that's how the ball has kept, been kicked down the field, year after year after year. Sure, it's interesting, not now. I know from my life professionally that no task like this or any other task gets achieved if you don't define an objective and impose a timetable for achieving that objective. It doesn't mean that at the outset you know how you're going to solve every problem along the way--
Closing remarks, please.
--you've got everybody focused on it. I support your efforts completely.
Next, we'll have Elise Aquadros or Elizabeth, followed by Paul Hari.
Thank you for hearing me. I have two, I live here in Hyannis, have lived here for seven or eight years, I don't know. And the water coming out of my tap is as offensive as the water going down my drain. And that's another issue that, I don't know that this is the right place to talk about it, but that's what I want to say. I have called the water department, and I don't have very many nice things to say about the reception that I've had from them. And I've tried to be, just state my case. As well as cleaning up the estuaries, we need to clean up the water that's coming into my house. And I would appreciate that. I don't know if anybody else has that same concern, but the tap water is dreadful. Thank you.
Paul will be followed by Richard Wayburn.
Paul Haley. Listen to all the people that have talked here with regard to this. I just found out about this within the last week or so, listening to Ed Lambert on the radio. I didn't know this was happening. I didn't know this was something in the offing. I came here tonight, first question I asked somebody when I walked in, are you going to hand out information on what this is about? They said, no. I said, how do we found out? We have to go to our website. I don't know what your website is. There's been no publication about this. I'm a resident, fixed income, as are good percentage of the people here. And I don't know whether I fall in this or fall out of this, but if I have to put in a new septic system, I have to leave. That's not within my purview. I haven't heard anything, is there any funding from the state? Is there anything available for residents that have financial hardships? That's, we're talking about something $30,000 are the numbers I've talked about. I can barely pay my mortgage. So there's going to be more said about this. This is like, all of a sudden, I came here tonight because I found out about, I heard it on the radio. Otherwise, I would have been home having my supper. So this, there's going to be more said about this, more information. Where do I get information? I don't even know what these things look like, what it's supposed to do. This has been a very poorly publicized thing, and as far as I can see, I'm going to have to move back to the North Shore where there are sewers.
Next, we'll have Ann Leonard.
I'm Ann Leonard.
Okay.
I'm Maggie Nivison with the Conservation Law Foundation. Residents of the Cape are in an awful position. The waters that make their homes special are becoming putrefied with sewage, and there's no inexpensive fix available. Decades of inaction by the state and towns have left residents without any easy solutions. Thankfully, the state is taking action now with these regulations. There's no time left for delay. There's no magical solution that will be uncovered in the next six months, year, or two years. The only effect of further delay is more sewage in the Cape's waters. As many have pointed out in these hearings, these regulations come with a cost. There's no free solution to a problem of this scale. However, the only way those costs fall on every homeowner of the Cape is if their towns continue to fail them. The watershed permits that these regulations provide for allow towns to apply for watershed permits, which would pause that five-year upgrade requirement. And it lets the towns do exactly what they've spoken of in these hearings, implement the most efficient solution for their own areas, rather than forcing everyone to upgrade their own systems. Residents will only bear these significant costs if towns continue to let their residents down by failing to protect them and the waters that make their homes special. These regulations are an important step and one that needs to be taken as soon as possible. There cannot be a delay. The timelines in these regulations cannot be shortened. Loopholes for new construction need to be closed. Builders cannot be allowed to install undersized systems for oversized houses by calling a 12,000-square-foot mansion a three-bedroom house. Watersheds need to be in complete compliance with their water quality obligations. Funding to support upgrades must be robust and distributed equitably. People have spoken about family homes on the Cape and about wanting to pass them down to their children and grandchildren. There will be no idyllic Cape Cod for those children and grandchildren to enjoy if this problem is not addressed, starting now. As we've heard, the pristine Cape many enjoyed when they were children is already gone. Continued inaction will destroy what's left. Deliberate action, taken now, will start to restore what's been lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Larry Morin-Mosen.
Is it Morin?
Larry.
That's me. I'm not doing it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Xenas Crocker, Barstow Clean Water Coalition. So I spoke in Lakeville the other night. I spoke about time to travel. Tonight, I just want to speak a little bit about time to act. I want to applaud DEP for bringing these regulations forward. The timing is not perfect. It's decades late, but let's not belabor that. Let's act today. I grew up on Cape Cod, like many of the other speakers. I've seen the deterioration. It's dramatic. It's severe. It's not going away. Climate change, warming atmosphere, no matter what the cause is, is going to make the conditions worse, not better. We really don't have time. We're running out of time. So I think watershed permits are the only way to go. These permits, if performed equitably, should give towns the ability to have a nuanced approach, depending on what their specific conditions are. So I'm sure that in areas that are on the west side, where we are right now by Buzzards Bay, are going to have different conditions. There's a lot of agriculture, other conditions there. Then there are on parts of Cape Cod where 85% or 90% are related to septic systems. Title V systems simply don't work. They don't work to remove nutrients. They don't work to perform other activities like CECs. But let's not wait for perfect to be the enemy of good. We need to act and expand searing, which many towns are doing today, but it's tremendously expensive. It also is happening in areas where the groundwater may not reach the estuaries we're trying to protect quickly. So I, like others who spoke before, would advise that we look at the closest-to-the-water homes and look at the new technology, the emerging technologies that are very, very close to being top-notch, performing at levels only really equal to municipal systems. We're testing some of those in a nonprofit here in Marston's Mills. And these systems, we believe, in just a matter of years, could be rolled out. I think that it's critically important for DEP to recognize and help define a roadmap for financing. Right now, today, if your Title V system fails, you're responsible. You write a check, that's it. Unless you can say you can't afford it, you're going to be on the hook. I believe there will be an equitable way to bring longer-term financing to this situation and allow people to be able to afford putting in the systems when a transaction occurs, their house is sold, when a system fails, when they're looking to upgrade their property. These are the conditions when we should see upgrades. Along the coast, people with cesspools, people with old Title V's, they should be not just encouraged, but those systems should be mandated immediately. Thank you very much.
Teresa Cagno.
Cunio.
And Teresa will be followed by Gary Markowitz.
I'm a taxpayer. I live in Centerville. And my water tastes fine. It doesn't taste putrefied. We've been going to the beaches. We swim in the beaches all over the Cape, excuse me, all over the Cape. And, you know, we don't, I don't know what this gentleman is talking about, but I think the water is fine. Now, I know there's going to be sewer systems putting in Barnstable or Hyannis, Centerville area. So I was just wondering if there's an exemption for people such as myself? Do we have to spend this amount of money to have these filters put in? That's the question I have. Because I can't afford it. That's my comment. So who do I go to for these answers? Who could answer this question?
I'd be very happy to speak with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Millie Garcia-Serrano, Mass DEP.
Pardon?
My name is Millie Garcia-Serrano at Mass DEP.
Okay, thank you, Millie.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Sam Wilson. I'm sorry, yeah, after Gary Markowitz, Sam Wilson.
My name is Gary Markowitz. I'm from Catuitt. And I'm part of an organization called Save Our Shoestring Bay. After considering the comments from the public comment sessions, I would like to offer our views on this matter. For over 30 years, starting back in 1992, our town governments knew about nitrogen source putrification of our waterways and its causes. And despite specific language that the current Title V regulations state, town governments' officials continue to approve hundreds of standard septic systems, installations, and replacements within known nitrogen-sensitive areas, despite the fact that some of these systems may not have complied with the regulation. Property owners rely on town government and professional engineers to decipher the rules and obtain legal permits to comply with wastewater regulations. Property owners should not be held financially responsible for fixing a Title V problem that they didn't cause. Government caused this problem, and government should fix and pay to clean up this mess. During the first two comment sessions, we heard phrases like, "The science is 20 years old. Homes don't cause most of the nitrogen runoff, and we need more time." How can we possibly allow any additional time to address this environmental emergency? Research and reporting from the U.S. EPA, the Cape Cod Commission, the Barnstable Clean Water-- the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, and the Estuaries Project are among the many organizations that have concluded that the science is sound and that the problem is very real, very serious, and must be addressed now. We must act now, as we have no longer, no longer fore to kick the can down the road. Bottom line is, Title V systems don't remove nitrogen. Nitrogen effluent from our septic systems travel quickly through the Cape's porous sandbar soil into our groundwater system, delivering nitrogen and other pollutants into our waterways. Title V is a problem because 65% to 80% of the nitrogen in our waterways comes from Title V septic system runoff. The elevated nitrogen is like a catalyst that leads to ecosystem failure due to the near hypoxic conditions found at the bottom muck. We fully support the DEP in this process of updating wastewater regulations and hope they will also include language that prioritizes solutions for properties within 500 feet of an NSA. We hope they also set up a purchasing clearinghouse for approved IA systems and searing companies, and fund a training program for new installers so munis can have shovel-ready solutions to expedite their approved plans. Finally, please don't ignore the noise from the detractors, or do ignore the noise from the detractors, because this process is important to all of us. Clean water is important.[699.62][699.62](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. All right.
Good evening. Andrew Gottlieb, Mashpee, representing the Association to Preserve Cape Cod. Let's start tonight's discussion with what we do know. We know that the current Title V code may be good enough for dealing with bacteria, but it's actually the cause, not the solution, to the problems we confront with the degradation of our marine waters throughout Cape Cod. The existing law, we know this, the existing law requires water quality that we are nowhere near meeting. We're all in violation of the existing statutes. We're all in violation of state and federal law, and the department has a role in changing that. We also know that delay means more years of the same. Lousy water quality jeopardizes everything that the economy of Cape Cod is based on. You hear a lot of very legitimate concerns tonight about impacts on property values, of complying with the revised code or meeting the water quality objectives. Those costs are dwarfed by the costs of lost value that comes with the demise of Cape Cod as a desirable location to come recreate, invest, build a business, retire, and pass homes on to children as a way of passing wealth from one generation to the next, until and unless we deal with our water quality problems. We also know that unless properly incentivized and pushed, towns will let this linger. We've lived through over a generation now of time when we've known what the cause of this problem has been, and it's only been recently that the problem has started to become addressed. At the time we were talking about this on the broad scale, the same arguments were being made. We can't possibly look at doing large-scale searing. We can't possibly look at solving this problem, because none of the financial tools exist to enable us to afford it. Over the last decade, Cape Cod has become the most cost-effective place with the greatest level of assistance from state and federal government and the county to subsidize and mitigate the cost of implementing wastewater solutions. That all happened because we finally started. As we move down the road that you're suggesting, additional improvements will be made to the funding systems to enable this to become more easily afforded by people. You've heard nothing other than delay as an alternative response to what you've put forward. Delay, continued delay, is not an acceptable answer for what we are confronting as a region. A generation has passed waiting for real change. Another generation will pass if you miss this opportunity to implement these regulations. The issue about enforcement and impact on the homeowner misses the point that these regulations are appropriately targeted to getting towns to do the right thing. Towns can protect their residents from the individual mandate associated with these regulations. You've got it right. Move forward. Do these regs now. Thank you.[920.36][920.36](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Next, we'll have Kristi Senatori from the Cape Cod Commission, followed by Tony Fitz.[935.44][935.44](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kristi Senatori, the executive director of the Cape Cod Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to make some comments tonight on both the proposed amendments to Title V and the new watershed permit regulations. As we know, the science shows that Cape Cod's coastal water bodies are severely impacted by nitrogen, primarily from our region's reliance on Title V septic systems. And as you all also know, in 2015, the Cape Cod Commission completed the Cape Cod Area-Wide Water Quality Management Plan, the 208 Plan, pursuant to Section 208 of the Federal Clean Water Act. The plan, which was certified and approved by Governor Baker, as well as the United States Environmental Protection Agency, provides recommendations for state and federal actions and support, as well as a framework for local action to reduce nitrogen entering our coastal watersheds and improve water quality. Healthy coastal embayments, estuaries, and other natural resources are critical for maintaining a vibrant Cape Cod economy. The proposed amendments to Title V and the accompanying watershed permit regulations are an important action to improve water quality on Cape Cod. The regulations encourage towns to obtain watershed permits, which expand a town's ability to utilize a range of technologies in meeting water quality standards, while providing enforcement forbearance. The watershed permit provides flexibility for towns to design a plan consistent with local needs. This approach is aligned with the watershed-based approach to wastewater and water quality management identified in the 208 Plan, and is one that the Cape Cod Commission supports. While Commission staff supports this general approach and the proposed regulations, we do have some clarifying questions and some recommendations, which I'll talk about briefly here, but we'll also be submitting these and following up in writing with a little bit more detail. Two-thirds of the Cape's embayment watersheds are shared by two or more towns. Commission staff suggests clarification as to how de minimis nitrogen contributions will be defined and handled, and how nitrogen trading might be accommodated without undue administrative burden to those towns in those instances. Regarding the amendments to Title V, the option for a scientific evaluation that does not require the water body to be issued a total maximum daily load for nitrogen provides flexibility for those communities with watersheds where an assessment of nutrient-related water body health has not been completed. However, it's not clear who can initiate that scientific evaluation other than Mass DEP. The Title V amendments also incorporate a process by which communities are provided time to develop a watershed permit application, provided they file a notice of intent to obtain a watershed permit within 18 months of the nitrogen-sensitive area designation. The pause of the five-year timeframe for individual system upgrades upon filing that notice of intent does not appear to apply to new construction. If this is the case, with the Cape's considerable housing crisis and the significant need for more affordable housing in mind, the Commission suggests that...
Closing remarks? I'm sorry for the inaccuracy.
...Mass DEP evaluate those opportunities to provide flexibility and the requirement for the best use of available nitrogen-reducing technology. Regarding the watershed permit regulations, these provide much-needed clarity around the requirements of a watershed permit application. Commission staff suggests that the 20-year projections required to apply include an estimate of the wastewater load associated with necessary affordable housing development or other locally identified housing needs.
Sorry, that's the end of your time.
Oh, sorry.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Tony Fitz?[1171.48][1171.48](APPLAUSE) All right. How about Deanne Cardos from Pecasset?[1178.11][1178.11](APPLAUSE) Don Steven?[1185.71][1185.71](APPLAUSE) And Daniel Orth? Signed in together? Pass? Okay.[1195.51][1195.51](APPLAUSE) All right, I think Bruce has left as well. So it appears that we've come to the end of our list of those who have signified that they would like to speak. Did I miss anyone?
You did. I signed in. I am signed in.[1236.48][1236.48](APPLAUSE)
My apologies, sir. Go ahead.[1239.98][1239.98](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Julius. I live right down the road here in Hyannis. I happen to be on town sewer with my wife. We've been on it for 22 years. We like the town sewer, but that's not why I'm here. I happen to sell real estate in this community, and I'm here because I, I feel and hear the financial pain from a lot of these people in this room. I have a lot of friends. Financial pain. Two weeks ago, Governor Baker gave $139 million to house some illegals that came into the state. This is a fact. I don't have a fight to pick with anyone here. In May, the Biden administration gave $68 billion, billion, I'm sorry, $68 billion to Ukraine. And yet, our governments, local, state, and federal governments can't help the innocent people here that you want to just tax completely out of their homes with insanity? Look, I was a builder here through the 1980s on the Cape. When it comes to water, the quality and whatnot, no, I'm not an expert, but I know a lot about it. And yes, it's absolutely true that the towns and the state, they're the ones most responsible. You have a lot of innocent homeowners out here right now, you know, who, it's not their fault. Quite honestly, 15 years ago, I asked for a town, a Cape-wide database in which boards of health, what they should have done, it's too late now, or maybe it's not, what they should have done is they should have had a Cape-wide registry database of homes that were to have been mandated, to have had their septic systems inspected, like every four years, like we inspect our cars. And the problem is, is that having, having sold real estate here in the last 39 years, the state never changed its mandate. So they allowed people to simply live in a home for 30, 40 years. You have, you have homes around Lake We Crockett right now that are family homes. Nobody ever mandated them to have to inspect their septic systems. Had that been done, we wouldn't have probably been here tonight. So again, my beef is the government needs to help. And I hear the people here tonight, some of the people, "Don't pause." No, you need to pause. This needs to be paused so that the government can get involved and help the people with the costs. The last thing I'd like to say is, if you will, Pio Lombardo, he's a guy out of Newton, great gentleman, he installs Nitrex systems, and I can tell you, his systems reduce somewhere in the neighborhood of 96% to 98% of the nitrogen.
Closing remarks, please.
So, again, you know, my, my beef, if you will, I hate to use that word, but for lack of a better word, is really in trying to help these poor innocent people who are going to be taxed out of their homes. It's not fair. It's not right, and Mass DEP needs to go back to the drawing board. And yes, this does need a pause. Thank you very much.[1455.35][1455.35](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person that would like to make a comment, or anyone that I've missed?[1467.13][1467.13](APPLAUSE)
You have a second chance.[1470.13][1470.13](APPLAUSE)
Yeah, we're going online first. All right. So Mary Beth will switch over to those who have their hand raised online.
Okay, thank you, Drew. So if you do, if you are attending online and you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you have called in to be online, you can do *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute when it's time, and I will use the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn. So first, we're going to hear from Roseanne Shapiro, and she will be followed by Roberta Mosh. So when you get the prompt to be a panelist, please say yes.[1519.01][1519.01](APPLAUSE) Roberta can unmute when you're ready.[1543.01][1543.01](APPLAUSE)
Hi, this is Roberta Mosh. I'm, I live in Hyannis. I'm on Stewart's Creek. One thing I think that should be discussed and brought to the attention tonight, where we're talking about protecting our water, is what's going on with Holtech and the decommissioning of the nuclear power plant. And I want to know, I don't think enough attention is being brought to this. I want to make sure that they, they're not allowed to be dumping radioactive water. I don't know what level. I don't think it's safe to be doing what they're doing, and I feel that the DEP should be halting their, or investigating what they're doing and stopping them from, from dumping whatever wastewater into, into Cape Cod Bay. We fish there. We eat the food that we pull out of the bay. We swim there. I don't feel safe hearing this news that they, they plan on leaking, or if they already have, leaching into decommissioning the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant, that this, that they feel that it's okay to dump this water into our bay. That's one thing. The other is, I, I feel, I'm disappointed that the Environmental Protection Agency has not stepped up to the plate to protect our open spaces. And this, this, this project that's being presented, that's a high-density, 13 large buildings being crammed into, literally, between two brooks in one of the last, most beautiful open spaces with trees, with, with, with what brings people to Cape Cod. What can we do to protect this space? I think there should be regulations on, on preserving our open space that's left. And somehow, you know, there's a lot of construction that needs to be repurposed, that needs, needs facelifts in Hyannis. Basically, those are the two things that are way heavy in my heart. Thank you.[1704.80][1704.80](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Roberta. Next up is Michael Boucher, and he will be followed by Ben C.[1722.01][1722.01](APPLAUSE) Michael, you can go ahead and unmute.[1754.51][1754.51](APPLAUSE)
Hello, this is Michael.
Go ahead, Michael. We can hear you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Boucher. I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee in the town of Acushna. I have some major concerns with this mandate, is basically what it is. Upon our residents, many of which are on fixed incomes, to saddle them with a cost that they may or may not even need is appalling to me. And furthermore, we've had no public outreach in our town by the Mass DEP. we've had no public outreach in our town by the Mass DEP. For a project of this magnitude, I would like to think that the Mass DEP would actually come out to our town and speak to us. There's been none of that, as our selectman, Mr. Hinckley, who attended in person said previously. I'm actually looking at a water quality report in front of me from the Town of Acushnet, and we purchase our water from New Bedford. And under the list of regulated contaminants, nowhere do I see anything about nitrogen. And under secondary contaminants, do I see anything about nitrogen as well? I would like to know more about the testing process. Who does the testing? Who determines the accuracy of the testing? What are the costs of these programs? These nitrogen mitigation programs going to cost our residents? Everyone is paying much more for everything. And as, there was a gentleman that spoke before, he was a Realtor. I think he hit the nail on the head. This is a classic example of government overreach and basically taxing people without representation. There needs to be a lot more of a public outreach with regards to this, and there definitely needs to be a pause. We don't even know what areas in the Town of Acushnet are in a watershed, if they are at all, and what we are contributing, or what we don't contribute as far as the nitrogen. There needs to be a pause on this. Our town cannot afford this, and we are not just going to take this laying down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ben C., followed by Richard Otis.
Hello? My name is Benjamin Cook. No affiliation. I am an Eastham non-resident taxpayer. My family has been visiting and living on Cape Cod for generations. We are drawn by the unique natural resources that are available and enjoy bird watching, fishing, shellfishing, swimming, surfing, boating, and many more. It is a privilege to live somewhere with such precious and tenuous natural resources. With that privilege comes a duty to protect the watershed and the environment as strongly as possible so that it can be enjoyed for many more future generations. A clean environment is a public good that we all enjoy, but addressing private sources of pollution is a private obligation that we should not expect the state to fund. I urge the DEP to pass these regulations without delay in order to uphold our duty to protect the watershed and the environment of Cape Cod. Thank you.
Thank you. Recording in progress. Followed by Theo Collins. Recording in progress. The Barnstable Room.
Do you want me to restart?
Yeah, when I will let you know. Recording in progress. Yes, we will restart. Can you all hear me now?
We can hear you on this end.
Okay. My apologies. I don't know why the connection keeps getting lost. We're going to ask Mr. Otis to please start over. If we are all set with our communication, are we good to go?
Hi, Anne.
Okay, we have reset the clock. Mr. Otis, thank you for your patience. Please start over.
My name is Rick Otis. I am the president for the Citizens for the Protection of Waukouid Bay. We have been around since 1981, working to protect the bay when we helped create the Washburns Island National State Park. As it requested at the beginning of the hearing, and to make it quickly, I'm going to associate ourselves with the Association for Preserve Cape Cod, CLF, and other water quality groups that have supported and defended what the department is doing. We'd laud your action and urge you to continue. But because I have talked to many of my new neighbors, people who are relatively new to Cape Cod and younger people, they don't seem to understand the degree to which the environment around them is degraded. They think what they see in Waukouid Bay now is the norm. So I want to do something a little different. In 1965, we had beds of eel grass that stretched for acres, so deep that they would stall your motorboat. We had scallops everywhere. You could get a bushel of blue crabs in a couple of hours. Strippers and snappers, I could pull them out of the Mooneeckus River as fast as I could fish them. There was even rice growing on the Mooneeckus River. It was a vibrant ecosystem, all of which now is dead. It is a collapsed environment. The marshes are falling apart. The mussels are dying. The bottom is mushy. It's hot and muddy. It is like poop and acid. The Mooneeckus River, a trit stream, has massive algae floating in April. And to quote Professor Howes from the University of Dartmouth, he says, "The Quashnet Mooneeckus River is the poster child for the worst water quality, worst habitat quality in Mashpee, and in fact, probably in both of the South Shore and Cape Cod." And what I've found and seen is that Waukouid Bay is a perfect example of the necessity for watershed planning. And it's split between three towns, Mashpee, Almath, and Sandwich. It is an area of critical environmental concern, yet nothing has happened. And I can tell you that when I look at what the Water Quality Management Commission, Almath, has done, they've got credit for what they do when it comes to searing, but Waukouid Bay is far on the list of things they're going to do. Indeed, it looks from the most recent document they put out that they're not going to begin looking at the denser parts of the bay until 2035. An awful lot of people like me will be dead before they get around to even considering that. And I want to add a couple other points. One, I think it's laughable and sad that the distortions we have heard from some people, cost estimates they throw out are scaring people. It is irresponsible of our elected officials and government officials to do that. The last thing I want to say is directly to you guys working for the Department of Environment. I've worked for US EPA for close to 20 years. I know what it's like to be in your shoes. And there are two things I will tell you. At the end of the day, when you go home, you need to look at your colleagues and say, "We did the right thing." We accomplished the mission of our department, which is protecting human health and the environment. Most importantly, though, when you go home and look at your spouses and your children and your neighbors, you know that you need to be able to say, "We did the right thing." And you are doing the right thing. Stick with it. Don't give in. You're on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Theo Collins, followed by Glenn McCarthy. Theo, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can people hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm here to support the proposed watershed permit system. I'd like to also start by mentioning that we are on land that was stolen from original stewards of this land, the Wapanoag people. And I want to encourage us to find a way to similarly steward this land instead of driving it towards catastrophe. I want to acknowledge we are trapped in what feels like an impossible place. That cities can potentially fall down on the job and still require people to shoulder costs of restoration. That's not okay. We're also stuck in this place because of things we hear in this forum had little control over, which is how Cape Cod was developed, making septic systems the treatment of choice in the first place. Studies over the past 20 years, we know now that the largest contributor of nitrogen to ponds, coastal waters, and impatience on the Cape is through septic systems. I get it. I understand people's disbelief at this conclusion. I was surprised to learn that as well. In many of the cases I've seen, actions of individual people and households often don't amount to significant aspects of widespread pollution problems. And it is hard to see the improvements of the costs that we're either forced to or choose to take on. But environmental costs of inaction are so high, we can't afford to leave next generations holding the bag, which is what we're potentially doing here. We're all doing some kind of cost-benefit analysis in our heads, but that's going to fail us because when it comes to quality of the environment, it's too terribly hard to accurately calculate those benefits of action. It's also too hard to accurately calculate the cost of inaction. My surprise or disbelief, our surprise or disbelief that individual houses could contribute so much doesn't change the reality. These aren't studies that are 20 years old. They're studies from over the past 20 years. It is the best information we have, and it's telling us that the largest contributor of nitrogen comes from septic systems. That's the information we have. That's the information we should move forward on. Yes, the cost is huge. But this isn't a cost we may or may not need. The cost of inaction is higher. It involves waters that will become hazardous to swim in, habitats that will degrade, will lead to closed beaches. It will really catastrophically, in fact, impact shellfish aquaculture projects, local businesses. It will crater housing prices. I really think that we need to move forward with these proposed watershed permit system. I think that is the best solution possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Glenn McCarthy, followed by Martha Craig.
Hi, I'm Glenn McCarthy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Mashpee, a longtime lover of Popanesset Bay, which has been so aptly renamed Poopanesset Bay. If you look around the bay, it's pretty obvious what happened. You can see the excessive development that's gone on there. Our water's in trouble. This is not disputed. It's happened. The shame and why I applaud and support what Mass DEP is doing is that every Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, they get worse because on one of those days, a local board holds a hearing and approves another ill-conceived, ill-thought-out, ill-planned, ill-developed project on a septic system that doesn't actually work. I'm shocked and saddened to hear town leaders and industry spokespeople say the words "impossible." I heard someone say 20 years is comically insufficient. We hear the words 30 or 40 years from now. I guess, though, that that just tells us the reality of where the current state is, that is that there is no impetus or plan to solve this problem. So at least they're saying that we are not going to do anything, which is why these regulations are so important. I'd like to pivot a little bit and say, if this attitude is what had prevailed in Boston decades ago, Boston Harbor would be a festering cesspool that it once was, as opposed to the jewel of the city that it is today, and the major tax base that it has become. We cleaned up Boston Harbor. We put a man on the moon in 12 years. I think we can surely stop polluting the estuaries of Cape Cod within the next 20 years. Particularly, the Cape as a recreation-based economy where everything is underpinned by our waters and our natural environment. It seems very doable. I think we need to have an attitude of can-do and figure it out, as opposed to just stall and delay and complain. In closing, I'd like to say that there's nothing wrong with regarding the treatment of sewage discharge so as not to pollute our ponds, bays, and rivers. Clean waters are not an unaffordable, unobtainable, audacious goal. They're the basic foundation of a healthy, vibrant, and economically sound society. They underpin the property taxes of Cape Cod, and it should not be phrased as a burden upon the people, but as an opportunity, just as Boston Harbor has turned out to be a tremendous asset for the city and state. Clean harbors on the Cape will be the most valuable asset for the citizens, the residents, and the governments of Cape Cod. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Martha Craig, followed by Anna Eddy. And if I mispronounce anyone's name, I do apologize. Martha, you can go ahead and unmute when you're ready.
Okay, I think I've unmuted.
Yes, you have.
Oh, we just lost her. Bear with me. Okay. I apologize, Martha. Hopefully she can rejoin us. I'm not sure what happened. Anna Eddy, followed by Deke Henderson.
So you should see a request to become a panelist, and you should say yes. Anna, you can go ahead and unmute.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Yes, the basic fact here is that we have to recognize is that ever since Title V came in in 1995, it has been the DEP has been forcing us to put in Title V septic systems. And they are strictly against the law, the Massachusetts Clean Water Act and the Federal Clean Water Act. So all this time, DEP has requiring us, under penalties, large penalties if we don't commit to it, to install Title V septic systems, even though they are completely against the law. And because of that action having been going on now for 27 years or whatever, we are now in what you, the catastrophic situation that we are in. And everybody now knows that about 60% to 80% of the nitrogen pollution comes from the Title V septic systems that the state still are requiring us to put in. About 27 years ago, I started finding About 27 years ago, I started finding out about this problem. I live on the Vineyard, by the way. And where I have been for 27 years experimenting with different ways to reduce the nitrogen. The first system I put in, they're all based on wood chips and plants with earthworms and a rich ecosystem. The first one was on an engineer's regular Title V in oak bluffs. And with just a simple bucket of wood chips, 32-gallon bucket of wood chips in a living ecosystem, and a fish box container with a garden with plants, that system got 95% reduction in nitrogen. The filtering took about 5 to 10 minutes, and then it returned into the septic, into the septic tank from where it was pumped. 95% with an extremely simple system. I got involved with a testing program, the D P testing program. It was prohibitively expensive and extremely discouraging as they just really didn't want to see it succeed, and they managed to scuttle it several times. And I think the one thing that we need to do is to have the D P allow any septic system that has some reasonable evidence of reducing the nitrogen, as long as it is at least as safe and sanitary as Title V. So that's what I would like, an opening the gate for all the many people who have experimented in various ways over many, many years. And I am one of them who has done with many, many tests and that have been confirmed to have that 90% to 99% range of nitrogen reduction. And the important message here is that these systems I'm talking about, they would be less than $10,000 per...
Do you think, moment, please?
Yes. And this is something that D P needs to figure out how to fund this because this is something that they caused. This is not something that should be wholly burned and by the, even though it's less than $10,000, which is way less than the $30,000 to $50,000 that other people say that such a nitrogen...
Ms. Eddy.
Would be costing. So, much less costly, extremely effective, very simple, and the gate needs to be open so it does not have to go through the owner's D P testing protocol. Testing, yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Eddy, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you, the time has expired.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Deke or Daki Henderson, followed by Earl Barnhart. So Deke, you can unmute when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Deke Henderson. I'm a homeowner on a modest income and a lifelong swimmer and sailor in Katoa. Until recently, I often swam from Riley's Beach out across the mouth of Katoa Harbor. But for nearly a decade, I have periodically been swimming when the water stinks like sewage. I know the smell is not from sewage, but it's the organic matter decomposing anaerobically, which is a classic sign of a highly degraded ecosystem. I had two friends come to visit this summer, and they would not go in the water because of the smell. I'd like to commend D P and especially the members of the Pleasant Bay Alliance for the work that has been done. D P approved the state's first watershed permit for Pleasant Bay in 2018, and their documents and experience provide highly valuable information that I recommend everybody read. The alliance members representing the towns of Harwich, Chatham, Orleans, and Brewster have a plan in place to achieve 100% compliance for Pleasant Bay in 20 years. The coordination between the towns is remarkable. I am, however, disturbed that the proposed regulations require only a 75% reduction in 20 years. I don't see how the standard could reasonably be expected to achieve clean waters in a tolerable time period. 75% reduction does not adequately solve the problem in any timeframe. I urge D P to codify aggressive interim performance criteria and implementation schedules. 75% removal in 10 years, reaching 100% in 15 years would be a good start. For towns that simply cannot comply, there are mechanisms for delay in the regulations. But let's not set the bar low to begin with. We have passed the buck far too long. Finally, as many have said, we need the state and federal government to step up with some major funding. I realize that this is a big burden for municipal governments, but that's just because your predecessors have hoisted it on you. So you need to step up to the plate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Martha Craig in the hopes that I can transition her to allow her to make her comments this time. Martha got cut off previously. After Martha, we will go to Earl Barnhart. Martha, you can unmute when you're ready.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, because I had almost given up. And I was moving on to other important issues. But I guess what I would like to say, after this long debate, is I applaud D P and this long slog through this revision of regulations, because I know it's tough. But I've grown up on Cape Cod, and I'm the generational example. And I was a college student in the 1980s when some of these issues came up. And everyone said, yeah, this is important. And it was also important to take care of climate change. You know, is it climate change, or is it just nice out? But we all knew there was something going on. And I guess I was naive in thinking that Massachusetts, as what I have always thought as a progressive, forward-thinking state commonwealth, would find a way to take care of this issue, and they never have. And a generation later, nothing has changed. And I just want to reiterate, there is no time to delay. There are answers. There are errors now where we used to shellfish, or we could no longer shellfish. There are places we used to swim, where we can no longer swim. And I would just concur with what the other speakers have said, Andrew Gottlieb and others, that we have known about this for a long, long time. And as a person who lives on Cape Cod, and as a person with no lot of means, you know, I'm happy to step up and do our part here. But everyone needs to do their part. This isn't a new issue. And if we don't take care of this issue now, we're doomed. You know, this is now. And we've known about it for now, and I know my time is up, but, you know... And I would also say, the D P, if people, as one of the former speakers stated, that they don't think that their estuary is degraded, that's poor outreach. And I would invite D P to impress or...
Concluding remarks, please, Martha.
Yeah, just expand on your outreach, which it sounds like from what the remarks I've heard, D P needs to increase their outreach, and especially if people don't...
Okay, Martha, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Earl Barnhart, he'll be followed by John Reimer.
Hello?
Hi, Earl, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Earl Barnhart, I live in East Valmont. I represent the Green Center, a nonprofit research and education organization. There are faster, cheaper, and ecologically better alternatives than sewers and IAs. The most promising one is urine diversion. Urine diversion is the strategy of avoiding putting nitrogen into water in the first place. Urine is collected at the household level and safely recycled as fertilizer for agriculture and food production. 80% of the nitrogen from a Cape Cod house is from the urine from the residents. 65% of the phosphorus is in the urine of the residents. This nitrogen and phosphorus is mixed with 16,000 gallons of pure water in flush toilets, and many of these nutrients are never separated again, even with sewers and IAs. Over the next, over the past 10 years, safe and affordable urine diversion technology has been developed all over the world and can be applied on a community scale today. Each town on Cape Cod should build infrastructure to collect, store, process, transport, and recycle urine as valuable fertilizer product. Regional food production would become more sustainable and resilient, and less chemical fertilizer would need to be imported. Sewers and IA septic systems do not recover or recycle any nutrients. They are wasted and dumped into the environment where they pollute the air, water, landfills, and other ecosystems. Urine diversion also has the advantage of being the cheapest technology for nitrogen management. The cost per pound of nitrogen removed by urine diversion technology is only about 1/10th the cost of sewers or IA systems. The lower cost would be affordable and equitable for low- and middle-income homeowners. Urine diversion also uses less water. Towns do not have to provide as much water to homes. Homeowners do not have to buy as much water. Two other waterless options that divert 100% of human waste nutrients, just like sewers do, are waterless composting toilets and waterless incinerating toilets. Both waterless composting toilets and waterless incinerating toilets are permitted by D P in Massachusetts. If 80% of the household nitrogen now polluting the Cape was recovered and recycled by urine diversion, the Cape could avoid spending $1.4 billion for sewers and hundreds of millions of dollars for more IA systems. Finally, urine diversion is more environmentally sustainable than sewers and IAs. It uses less energy, produces fewer greenhouse gas emissions, and creates less global warming. Urine diversion is the fastest, cheapest, and most sustainable option for the Cape. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be John Reimer, followed by Hilda Menge. John, you can unmute when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, my name's John Reimer, I'm a resident of Truro. I'd like to say that Scott Horsley, who has spoken earlier in support of these regulations, is our wastewater consultant. I'm familiar with Scott, and I've heard him many times make presentations to our Board of Health when they've discussed these possible new regulations. I join with Scott and many others tonight with urging you to implement these new regulations, and the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next will be Hilda Menge, followed by Brian P.
Can you hear me?
Yes, it's a big echo.
Can you hear me? Turn the audio off. Can you hear me now? It's echoing way too bad. Get... Hello? Hello?
Hilda, something is echoing.
Yeah, trying to fix it.
All right, Hilda, I'm going to unmute the next and come back.
Can you hear me now? Hello? Hello?
Hello, that's much better.
Okay, I cannot hear anything, but let me see if I can fix this. Okay, let me quickly go through this. I hope I keep my voice, because I lasted this week. My name is Hilda Menge, and I live in East Valmont, and I'm a board member of the Green Center. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Our household members are very strong components of cleaning our water bodies as soon as possible, if done in the most socially, financially, and environmentally responsible way. The plan proposed by the D P is none of that. We knew 25 years ago that this nitrogen problem had to be addressed, and we installed waterless equal toilets in our solar home in 1999 and have been enjoying the cleanest, quietest, odorless bathroom experience ever since. None of our human waste nutrients are flushed away in the larger environment. We don't contribute to water pollution. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Take sewers, and mini-sewers, like IA systems as an example. Valmont has spent hundreds of millions of dollars to sewer a few thousand homes in the last 50 years, and each year, our ponds and estuaries are getting even more polluted. Moving nutrients from one place to another, as sewers and IAs do, wasting enormous amounts of money and water and energy and all the nutrients in human waste is not, and will never give us clean air, water, or land for a sustainable future. Greenhouse gas emissions have never come up in these discussions. This never comes up as a cost of any of the proposed plans. The U.S. has pledged to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 50% in the next eight years. That means big greenhouse gas reductions for all of us. Any idea of greenhouse gas contributions of installing new sewer pipes or an IA system? Has anybody ever talked about that? Let me give you an example. One section of 36 cement pipe and transport installation is equal to the greenhouse gases of one person per year in China. or two of people in the U.S. And that does not include operation and maintenance. There's something wrong with nit- there's nothing wrong with nitrogen and phosphorus. What's wrong in all the proposed plans is that we put them in the wrong place. We put them in water, in lots of water. So they spread wide and far where they do the most harm. They're supposed to go back on the land instead. Nitrogen and phosphorus are essential for our food supply. Ninety-eight percent of the nutrients we eat, we excrete, and then we flush them away in the water of all places. This is insanity. We are running out of phosphorus. Fertilizer prices have increased by four hundred percent. And in the meantime, we're also increasing our greenhouse emissions. It's time for the D P to scrap this proposed plan as the way they're proposing it now and start thinking with long-term sustainability in mind and find ways to use human waste nutrients as an asset instead of an unaffordable liability. I hope that the D P will think clearly about urine diversion as an option that is affordable and can be applied right away. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Brian with a Y and capital letter P, not a full name.
Hi, Mary Beth. This is Brian. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. From my point of view, and thank you for having me on here, I agree that we need to clean up the waterways and the watersheds. I am a resident of Brewster. I'm a homeowner in Brewster. I fall on the Pleasant Bay watershed. And it's this Pleasant Bay is actually shared amongst many towns. It's shared amongst Orleans, Brewster, Harwich, and Chatham. And within Brewster, my actual neighborhood is street is the closest to Pleasant Bay for the town of Brewster. So we would, my neighborhood would be directly impacted. I know people on here have mentioned that we should test test this new septic tank systems by prioritizing those that are closest to these watersheds. And what I ask is if you can review this because out of the thirty homes, out of the thirty homes on my street in Brewster, twenty-five to twenty-eight of them approximately have two household members, full-time and part-time. Most of them are retired and elderly, and they also are on a fixed income. And to have the, this financial burden on homeowners is not fair. I would like to see what the proposals are to help residents with these costs and if there are any other alternatives. I know nitrogen is one of the most from septic tanks is the most, probably the most contributor of nitrogen. But are there other forms of alternatives to reducing this? Such as not using fertilizers or pesticides on your lawn and on your plants? Can we reduce that and have no use of fertilizers or pesticides that can reduce our use of nitrogen? Our runoff of nitrogen? So just want to put it out there that there are many homes. Mine also, I have three-bedroom, a three-bedroom home, and there's only two occupants. And to say that I contribute more nitrogen than someone who lives more inland but has a household of eight members, they may be contributing more nitrogen than I do, yet I live closer to one of the watersheds. So please consider that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Brian with an I, Paradise, followed by Catherine Lang. Brian, you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So everything I've heard tonight is great. Both sides. I'm a native Cape Codder. I am, I'm not on a board or a panel. I grew up here. I love these waters. I love everything you're doing. My biggest thing is, I lived on Nantucket twenty years ago, and I saw Nantucket losing their middle class. Me, as a blue-collar worker, we were barely afforded to buy our house this year. And I see something like this come up, and I see the price tag that is not even close to affordable, even though I agree with it. I am not living in my third-generation third-generation grandparents' house on the beach. I'm living in a house that I worked hard for. And if I get hit with a ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollar bill, that is not going to work. We will have to leave Cape Cod where I was born and raised. So that's my biggest concern is there should be some federal help for this. Because I've heard over and over and over, we've known about this forever. And now, once I'm trying to get myself situated, you're going to come at me with this because I'm not too far from the ocean. And I don't want to have to move because now you've decided to move on your part. So there should be something figured out on that part. When Title Fives came up and everybody was forced to do that, my mother is still paying on that. And that's a thirty-year town loan. And I know Town of Barnstable, they're doing all the septic. But I just want to make sure we're good because if you hit me with a thirty thousand dollar cost, I can't do that. We will have to sell and go. And that's a real thing. I am, I'm not a trust fund baby living in Eastham, sitting on a water board or some weird committee. I'm a real guy. I'm a blue-collar guy on Cape Cod. And that's a lot of people here. And if you want to lose the middle class, keep doing this. We can beat Nantucket. We'll beat Nantucket moving forward. That's it.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Lang, followed by Ed McManus.
Okay, Mary Beth, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, and thanks for holding the space tonight and going well into the evening. I'm Catherine Lang. I'm the policy specialist for the Masters for Rivers Alliance. We are a statewide nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting and restoring the Commonwealth's rivers and streams. We have eighty-five member groups, a number of whom are on the Cape and in the area affected by these regulations. We know that severe nitrogen pollution has been plaguing coastal waters for decades since the Title V regulations went into effect, demonstrating that they have fallen far short of protecting our waters and our wildlife. The inadequacy of these regs has resulted in degraded ecosystems and reduced recreational opportunities for residents and visitors alike. Left unchecked, this issue will further annihilate aquatic habitat and render these waters unsafe for recreation. We know that without a push from the state, the widespread action necessary to get at this problem simply won't happen, and not anytime soon, at least. So Mass Rivers strongly supports swift action to reduce nitrogen pollution in Cape Cod and across southeastern Massachusetts. We believe that the proposed regulations that D P's put forth will make significant progress in achieving improved water quality and that D P should pass these regulations without further delay. We've seen the damage that existing Title V regs have wrought over the past few decades. And that poor water quality will only get worse with further delay. In fact, seventy-five percent of, seventy-five percent nitrogen reduction in twenty years still does not solve our problem. If anything, D P could be more aggressive with their timeline and their nitrogen reduction goals overall. We commend D P for putting this package forth that rightly encourages towns to lead on this issue rather than making homeowners face costly upgrades because, as folks have said tonight, past planning, past choices has allowed for this sprawl and inappropriate pollution we have from septic systems today. And people have said over and over that the burden of cleaning that up should not be on current homeowners and residents. Towns can put in the planning work, partner with state and federal legislators to find funding solutions, especially from federal sources in a way that homeowners might not be able to. So we applaud the flexibility allowed under the watershed permit, giving space or flexibility. Nobody's debating that this pollution will be expensive to fix. It's a huge project. But the financial costs of inaction to local economies and future generations will be higher, not to many environmental and cultural that are priced. Pollution nitrogen is non-negotiable. So we commend the E P for putting forth these regs. We hope you'll implement them as swiftly as possible and rule out a great regulatory process to work with stakeholders along the way. Thanks again for your time. We'll submit more in writing.
Thank you. Next is Ed McManus, and Ed will be followed by Lynn Turner, who is our last online commenter.
Hello, my name is Ed McManus. I'm a resident of Harwich. And like Brian, who was a couple of folks before me, I'm a blue-collar guy. My wife and I, we worked here on Cape Cod since we moved here in two thousand. But I'm also, have been involved as a committee member and a local official, having served fifteen years on the Harwich Board of Selectmen and on a number of different committees. I'm currently the clerk of the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association. And I want to make it clear, I'm not speaking as a representative of any of those groups, but as an individual. In Harwich, I think many people have noticed that, noted that we have cooperated with our neighboring towns of Chatham, Brewster, and Orleans in looking at a regional watershed approach in cleaning up the problems in Pleasant Bay. And are very proud of the fact to have received the first watershed permit for that. During my time on the Board of Selectmen, we brought many funding requests to town meeting for, to do all the studies and the planning necessary to get to the point of having our comprehensive wastewater management plan approved. And I believe it was twenty sixteen or seventeen. And our voters in town voted to approve every funding request that's come along, including recent requests to begin implementing those plans to the tone of approving bonds in the nature of thirty million dollars. Also, as a selectman, I remember the long fight to allow towns to receive a rooms occupancy tax for rental of houses, Airbnb, and that sort of things. One of the benefits that came along with that, finally being approved by the state, was also an additional amount of tax to fund the wastewater management fund for Cape Cod, which is paid, it's a tax paid by our visitors, but it's something that the state has done for us to make the whole process of implementing the clean water actions we need to take much more affordable for the towns. It's estimated that will reduce the total cost in Harwich by somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-three percent. So I think, you know, if we all step back, we will find that this project, problem and the solution is affordable and that we need to move ahead with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We did have another hand raised. So it will be Lynn Turner, followed by Kevin Galligan. Lynn, you can go ahead and unmute when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Lynn Turner, and I've been listening to the meeting on Zoom. I am just a concerned citizen from Dartmouth. In watching all of the presenters, I have noticed that most of the people that are for this work for environmental groups and have been following this very closely. I think they're well-informed. I think the people that we're not hearing from enough are the ones that are the citizens that are going to be needing to pay for the septic upgrades. I think that the information, or I know the information has not been handed out and the citizens have not been notified well in our town and many other towns, is what I'm hearing. So I think that D P needs to take a step back and make sure that they do this the right way in notifying everybody of the problem. And that is something we shouldn't shy away from. The problem is real, like everyone's saying, but we need to inform everybody correctly. It shouldn't just be snuck, you know, something that sneaked in and everyone has to pay this. And I think we need to make sure everyone's on board with understanding the problem. And there was a lady that named Anna Eddy that had a solution that was cost-effective. The main concern is the cost of getting rid of the nitrogen. I think we ought to find out more about her simple solution and the simple system. If we could just have a test. I mean, we just, we do need to work the problem. We shouldn't shy away from working the problem. But we should not be taxing individual homeowners only and everybody else. Many, many people are saying we should get help to fund these things. The biggest issue is the cost. And sneaking it in without properly educating and reaching out to the towns involved will be unforgivable by many. And I think we're going to come into a lot of pushback if we don't do a better job of laying this out in a more proper fashion than just doing quickly, like Chris Fay was mentioning earlier, about, you know, within a week, there is the only amount of time to hear about residents' issues, and it's not even disseminated by a mass mailing. I think we really need to take a step back, pause, only to get everything pulled together in a more respectful way to all of the residents here because there's a select few that seem to know about this. And the rest of us are just newly coming to this. And pretty much everybody feels they can't afford it financially. So we do need to look at those pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Galligan.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you, Millie, Drew, for the patience and time listening. I am a select board member from the town of Orleans. I also chair the Town of Orleans Wastewater Management Advisory Committee. I also chair the Town of Orleans Wastewater Management Advisory Committee. And I'm also honored and privileged to be the chair of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board that has brought through, as Mr. McManus mentioned, significant funding to push projects across the finish line that would never have happened. Because now we do in fact have the funds available to advance projects, along with the help of the state and the federal government. So funding is there if we really work hard at it. And that's the last comment I really wanna share because I wasn't going to make comments. I was more listening today. But after Brian from Brewster spoke, Brian P., I had to comment because in fact, back in two thousand eighteen, Brian, and for anyone out there, please do take a look at the Mass DEP-approved Pleasant Bay Targeted Watershed Management Plan. This has been in place. Um, it has responsibilities, but it has significant benefits for the four towns that formed this in partnership. The towns of Orleans, Brewster, Harwich, and Chatham. It is working, folks. We can do this. I remain ever the optimist that we will get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. And now recording in progress. Any other online attendees with their hands up? Oh, no. I think we lost communication again.
We can hear you over here, Mary Beth. Can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
Can you still? Can you hear me?
Okay, it's the moment when we'll have this fixed. Apologies again, folks.
Recording in progress.
Okay, can you hear us now? Can we hear you guys?
I believe I'm on mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Perfect.
Sorry about that, everyone.
Did you have any, um, anyone to raise their hand?
We do not have any other attendees online with a hand raised. Oh, I'm sorry. I take that back. We have one person, Noah Clements.
Sorry. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Noah, go ahead. Oh, hang on. Got double here. Noah, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Noah Clements. I am a resident of East Falmouth. And I wanted to express my support for the uh, proposed regulations. I su, I support uh, all of them and as quickly as possible. Uh, I wanna say that the official comments made by the Town of Falmouth and uh, in, in December first, as well as the ones made by the head of the Falmouth Water Quality Management Committee uh, tonight, show why these regulations are so important. We've known for decades uh, that there was a need to improve our water quality, and yet, nothing has been done. Um, in two thousand five, we've, uh, Massachusetts Estuary Project has already, had already done a lot of the groundbreaking, ground, lay, groundwork, laying out what the TMDLs would need to be done for, and nothing has been done. You know, it's always, what can we do to not pay for this? Uh, I do support uh, all comments that say that the state should provide funding to help this. I don't think that uh, that all of the burden should be made on homeowners for uh, Title V systems. I think that that, that this is a public good and it should be borne by the public. And that includes all of us. The, you know, the, the, I will say that so many times the towns seem to show that searing is the only option that they are considering. And since the Cape Cod Commission was formed, they did a number of studies showing other alternatives solutions, including the uh, amending the Title V regulations and IA systems. So I do support um, the proposed regulations. And we need to stop putting off implementation. If we wait another twenty years and then you say, okay, now's the time, it'll be, no, another twenty years will be too soon. Uh, that's, that's just unacceptable. And it's been, you know, the water quality's been going down for the last twenty years. It keeps on going down. Every year, every study shows worsening of the water quality. And it's time to turn it around. So thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have a caller on the phone. Chris Jackson, last four digits, one nine eight one. Hang on, Chris. If you can star six to unmute.
You, you can hear me?
Can hear you now, yes. Thank you for your patience.
My, my name is, yeah, my name is Chris Jackson. I have a house in Catuette. I have had the pleasure of sailing and swimming Catuette for over sixty years. It is my hope that my children and grandchildren will have the same opportunity. I fully support the proposed regulations. How many more beach and pond closings do we have to go through before we realize we need the water quality to start improving immediately? Thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Beth Neger. Beth, if you can accept the panelist question? You wish to speak? I apologize, I'm having difficulty moving Beth to the panelist. Gotta be kidding me. Can't hear.
We can hear you, Mary Beth.
I can hear you again now. We couldn't hear you earlier. So I was not able to get the last person through, and they are not available on the list anymore. So hopefully, they will be able to comment through DEP dot talks at mass dot gov. There are no more hands raised on the online attendee list.
Thank you. And before we close uh, the hearing, is there anyone else in person who desires to provide comments? Yes, sir?
Chris Fay from Dartmouth. I'm wrapping up my comments. I started a little bit earlier. There have been ongoing water quality studies dating back decades on the Westport River and the Slocom River. Mass DEP has failed to be proactive tackling these issues by imposing regulations on new construction and replacement of failed septic systems. Mass DEP wants to see timely action on reducing nitrogen. However, this approach is not equitable, at least around, at least around where I live. Agricultural runoff and especially the deregulated for-profit composting facilities are not targeted to share any of this burden. And these entities are major contributors to the nitrogen issue in my area. There's definitely a stark contrast of what we see in the Bedford, Dartmouth-Westport area compared to the Cape. How can agriculture, which seems to be untouchable as the quote-unquote golden cow, along with composting, not be part of the solution? Especially with the proliferation of composting facilities over the last several years since deregulation, which are now located throughout the watersheds in question in Dartmouth and Westport. Some cases, they're directly adjacent to our rivers, within a few hundred feet. As uh, Chris Meeshow from the Dartmouth Board of Health had mentioned just last Wednesday when we had the public hearing, we had over nine hundred thousand gallons of wastewater and combined sewer overflow discharged into Clark's Cove. That's an area that I fish out of. Um, I, I enjoy a lot of time on the water. Spend times at the beaches around there, shell fishing. That all can't happen when the CSO is discharged into those areas. It's, it's pretty disgusting. Florida's been dealing with a lot of these issues, as someone had mentioned earlier, but they're not putting the burden on the backs of individual homeowners. The state is stepping up to fund initiatives for mitigation. Why the opposite in Massachusetts? Where has our federal delegation been, along with our state government, in securing the necessary funding to properly address this longstanding, longstanding issue? If this was a super fund site, this would already have funding and be on a track to mitigation. This country shelling out tens of billions of dollars with an open checkbook for the war in Ukraine. Yet we have a known water, water quality issue throughout this country, not just in this area. That's been allowed to fester for decades, and now DEP wants to immediate action, put it on the backs of the septic owners, especially off Cape. Again, different circumstances, it looks like. And it's really in response to litigation. Shame on the DEP for putting this on the, um, on the taxpayers with such a rushed process at the very end of a longstanding study. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else uh, in person that would like to make a comment?
All right, it appears we've heard from everyone who desires to provide comments at this hearing. I thank all of you who provided comments, as well as those who have been in attendance. All the comments from this hearing and the written comments received by five PM on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-two will be considered before Mass DEP finalizes the proposed draft regulations. There being no further testimony, this public hearing is now closed on December fifth, twenty twenty-two at nine oh four PM. Please end the recording.